Back.
I'm back.
There, but we've got a quorum. Marty, are you there?
Yep.
There he is. Okay, great. We're all here. Okay. If you are joining us, we'd like to welcome everyone who is listening in tonight. We've just completed our pre-meeting and I would like to call the Holiday City Planning Commission meeting to order on January 5th, 2020 at six PM. My name is Jan Bradshaw. I am the Chair of the Holiday Planning Commission with Chris Layton as my Vice Chair. Planning Commissioners joining us tonight are Elisa Lloyd, Anne Mackin, Howard Layton, and Marty Banks, and Mary Ann Ricks will join us shortly. We also have with us tonight from the City of Holiday staff, our new Economic Community and Economic Development Director, Lenise Davenport, our new Planning Manager, John Tierlink, City Recorder Stephanie Carlson, and Holiday City Legal Counsel Jamie Blakesley. Before we start on our agenda, I would like to read the following statements. The first one is regarding COVID-19. I, Jan Bradshaw, as the Chair of the City of Holiday Planning Commission, do hereby find and declare as follows: Due to the emergency conditions which currently exist in the state of Utah and specifically in Salt Lake County and the City of Holiday as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the holding of public meetings with an anchor location as defined in the Utah Open and Public Meeting Act presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location, and the risk to those who may be present at an anchor location can be substantially mitigated by holding public meetings of the Planning Commission pursuant to electronic means that allow for public participants via virtual means, and the city has the means and ability to allow virtual participation in the public meetings in accordance with the Utah Open and Public Meeting Act. Now therefore, based upon the foregoing for thirty days from the date of this order, meetings of the City of Holiday Planning Commission shall be conducted by virtual means without an anchor location. This was dated January 3rd, 2021. This is a new one. And I'd also like to read a short summary about the Planning Commission. The City of Holiday Planning Commission is a volunteer citizen board whose function is to review land use plans and other special studies, make recommendations to the City Council on proposed zoning map and ordinance changes, and approve conditional uses and subdivisions. The Planning Commission does not initiate land use applications, rather acts on applications as they are submitted. Commissioners do not meet with applicants except at publicly noticed meetings. Commissioners attempt to visit each property on the agenda where the location, the nature of the neighborhood, existing structures and uses related to the proposed change are noted. Decisions are based on observations, recommendations from the professional planning staff, the city's general plan, zoning ordinance, and other reports by all verbal and written comments and by evidence submitted, all of which are part of the public record. Okay, to get all of that exciting stuff out of the way. Right at the beginning, I would like to give our new Community and Economic Development Director, Lenise Davenport, an opportunity to introduce herself and tell us a little bit more about her. Lenise, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and hello, members of the Commission. I thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself tonight. I'm really excited to join the terrific team at Holiday City and also really excited to work with all of you and, you know, in addition to the members of the council. So I'm really ecstatic. My first day was yesterday. I'm already feeling like there's a lot happening and maybe a little overwhelmed, but I'm really excited. So a little bit about me, it won't take a ton of time. I'm coming from the Wasatch Front Regional Council. I was there for about nineteen years. My most recent role there was in government relations. I was the Government Relations Manager, so focused a lot on legislative and policy activities at the local, state, and federal level, principally related to transportation, but also air quality, land use, housing, and economic development. Before that, I managed a couple federally funded programs, like a community development block grant program and the state's Community Impact Board, and then I started a regional economic development district and the Wasatch Front Economic Development District. It was federally recognized and it opened the door to entities like Holiday City and others in the region to federal funding through the Department of Commerce. So I live in Sandy. I'm married. I have a nineteen-year-old kiddo in college and two boxers, and that's probably all you need to know about me at this point, but I'm really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Lenise. We're lucky to have you. Wow, that's quite a sheet of accomplishments, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to the item number one on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for a conditional use permit at 2163 East Pheasant Way in the R-143 zone. I need to let everyone know tonight that I have a conflict of interest with the applicant. So at this time, I will be turning the meeting over to my Vice Chair, Chris Layton, to conduct this portion of our meeting. Chris?
Thanks, Jan. I am honored. We're going to have John Tierlink give us an overview on the conditional use permit and also ask John to clarify the difference between what a conditional use is versus a variance, so that everybody, not only on the commission, but those listening, can understand what process we're really attending to this evening. So, John, I will turn it over to you to explain this application.
Thank you, Vice Chair Layton. Application before you tonight is a conditional use request by property owner Tony McQuinn. The section of ordinance that you're considering tonight is a conditional approval for an accessory building to exceed normally permitted footprint sizes. There is a predetermined threshold for footprints of accessory buildings that the council had established in 2007 to be normally acceptable permitted footprint sizes. If a property owner wishes to exceed that size, the request needs to be forwarded to the Planning Commission for consideration approval as per specific sections of approval guidance based upon ordinance. Those sections are stated in 13.0804 of the ordinance, and there are also standards therein. The difference between a conditional use approval or permit application and variance would be in that conditional uses in approval permits are essentially allowed uses in any zone, particularly this zone, this is R-143, that is considered allowable. However, circumstances may present themselves in a way that not all mitigating or regulatory standards could be written into zoning ordinance, and therefore, it's up to the Planning Commission to determine what those situations are and apply standards in order to mitigate those adverse situations. There could be any number of items. Specifically, they're delineated in code. So in order to deny one, it would have to be presented to the Planning Commission as proof that no type of mitigating circumstance could possibly be applied to this conditional use permit in order to minimize or adversely or reduce this adverse effect that has been presented to the planning mission by either the public or by physical evidence in itself. Now, compare that to a variance. A variance is a specific standard or a specific application that can be applied as relief from any standard in the zoning ordinance. That application is presented as a quasi-judicial situation or application and only heard by our hearing officer. Those applications are understood as as situations where they're not to be self-imposed or economic in nature. They're elements that are established by state law and carried through district courts. Very different application that we're seeing tonight. So not a variance, but it is a conditional use request to exceed the minimum threshold, the minimum permitted footprint size, in this case being twelve hundred square feet. The applicant is requesting two thousand, which happens to be the threshold level of a one-acre parcel. This lot not quite having an acre, full acre, therefore is limited to its guest house size of twelve hundred square foot footprint. This property in which the zone, or the property, the zone in which the property is located is R-143, which is a one-acre zone. However, there are not very many one-acre parcels in that zone. In the immediate vicinity, we've highlighted a few. Most of those parcels are less than an acre. So those that aren't highlighted here would be limited to that twelve hundred square foot permitted footprint size, but that doesn't mean to say that they could not come in and request for the planning commissions in a condition to exceed that size. I think... Unless you have any other questions from staff, I think we went through the majority of these items in the work session.
Do any of you have questions of John or other staff or council regarding this?
So, I mean, it is a conditional use applications are public hearings, so you may or may not have public tonight that would like to address this matter. You have received a packet of comments from staff or email comments from the neighborhood to consider.
Thanks, John. Next, it would be appropriate to hear from the applicant, Mr. McQuinn. So is Tony there?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
There we go. Can you see me? Let me see if I can do that too. Still a novice when it comes to this. Start video. Okay, great. So thank you for the opportunity to hear my petition. I want to give a little bit of background information and go through what exactly we're requesting and rationale behind it. So a year ago, we purchased the property at 2163 Pheasant Way with the intention of building a large family home and retirement home. And actually, we were really thrilled to find a lovely private community centrally located, and we're especially happy to find a home close to a major bus route to help provide added independence for our special needs daughter. We were looking for a property where we could build a long-term home to fit the various needs of our unique family and have heard wonderful things about the neighborhood ever since. We are the third recent owner. The first owner demolished the house and landscaping over the objection of the neighbors. The second owner developed house plans, but ultimately decided it would be easier to build in another location. And at our neighborhood meeting, we heard a lot about the beautiful property that existed there before, but there was also a lot of anger from the previous owners, but we received very few substantive comments on our actual proposal. This afternoon, I received the neighbor comments from John, and they reflected a similar feeling towards the property. As I read it, it talked about the previous property that was there and anger towards the fact that it had been demolished or, you know, questioned why we needed a guest house in the first place, even though it was authorized by code. As a homeowner, we have the right to build and use our property consistent with the planning and building codes. We are intending to be good long-term neighbors. As I said, we're planning on using this for thirty to forty years that the neighbors have been there, and are building a house to fit our long-term needs and hope that the actions of the previous owner won't impact this application. We fully intend to comply with all the building and planning requirements. We have plans here that we've actually had drawn up. It's consistent with all the setbacks, zoning, and planning codes that we have today. We have elevations and floor plans, so we have designed those to be consistent with all the codes that we have that we've reviewed, and they'll be reviewed again once we go to planning. The only thing that we're really requesting here is to expand to a guest house block coverage that would be allowed under an acre versus the smaller amount. The one thing that John didn't mention when he was giving the overview is that we are point nine seven of an acre, so we're just under an acre. So we decided to come to the Planning Commission to see if we could get a conditional use permit to actually build this place. Can I take control of the...
No, but you can let me know what you would like to look Zoom to.
Well, I have another document I was going to go through. It's just the overview, but I can just talk through it. Basically, what we wanted to do is have a multi-use building. We wanted to have, actually, let me pull up my notes here really quick. So... You know, so basically, the only thing that we're really asking for is that expanded coverage on the lot. Everything else we're going to do within code and within planning. We'd like to have additional accessory buildings beyond the main house. The main things are for a guest house, additional covered parking, additional storage, and a woodworking shop. We have seven kids currently. Four of them are going to be driving within the next two years. So we felt that we needed to have additional parking on site. Some of these kids are going to be with us long-term. We have some special needs kids. So, and we have seven kids. Five of them are adopted. So we anticipate our family to be coming and going and needing long-term care in our house. One of the things that we focus on when getting this property is having a separate structure for our daughter so that she can have a separate, independent, supervised living experience on our property. One of the things that really appealed to us, and the reason why I wanted this property is it's so close to the bus stops on Highland Drive, which will give her freedom to go uptown to different types of jobs and service opportunities. Like John said, if we have an acre, we're allowed a two thousand square foot guest house coverage. If we're under an acre, it's twelve hundred square feet, so there's a considerable difference between those two properties. And if we had twelve hundred square feet, you know, we tried to figure that out, and that's just too small of a building to incorporate the additional parking and a workshop and housing. So we're coming to you today to ask for leniency to approve these plans. We held a neighbor meeting on the 12th of December. We really didn't have any substantive comments on the house itself or the plans. All the comments that we had were around the previous property, what was there before, how everybody loved the previous property, how they loved the landscaping, and so they wanted to return the landscaping to what we'd had before. So nothing really on the structure itself or the crest itself. I think most of the neighbors that attended the meeting understood there was a simple variance, and if we had an additional thirteen hundred square feet, we wouldn't even need the variance, not the variance, but the conditional use permit. So I think the people who attended the meeting understood that, but reading the comments, a lot of those people weren't at the meeting. So we'd like to combine all those uses into one building to maximize landscaping in the backyard area. A significant portion of the property is dedicated to the private lane. So if we had to do multiple buildings, it would really use up all the available property. Like I said, it's only point nine, it's only a point oh three difference between our property and a full acre. And the larger guest house would provide additional greater flexibility for our family requirements, housing our married children, family guests, caretakers, live and help as we grow older. And then, as I mentioned, specifically supervised independent living for our special needs daughter. We have complied with all of the codes, and we'll be checking that again when we go for a building permit. So our intent is not to push the rules other than ask for this one conditional use. The only two things that were really brought up at the meeting and in the notes that came from the neighbors that are really relevant were statements that they want to make sure that we didn't rent the property out, and we have already submitted the second kitchen covenant with the application, so we've already hopefully taken care of that one. The other issue that they had that was kind of relevant was that they didn't want us to do anything that would limit the size of the private lane or restrict access to that, and we really have no intention of doing that. They were concerned we might put a fence right on the road or something like that that might make the private lane difficult to drive on, but we don't have any intention of doing that either. So there were a lot of things mentioned in the notes, but most of them were things I didn't think were really relevant about returning the property to its previous state before the previous owner tore the property down. So that's the first request. There is actually one other request, and that is, we'd like to start building both of these houses, both of these buildings at the same time, but the carriage house will be done probably in half the time of the main house. And so we would like the ability to get an occupancy permit on the carriage house once it's completed and meets all those requirements, so we can start moving things over and start using the carriage house before the primary residence is done. So there's just the two requests. The one is to be able to build a building consistent with a one-acre property, and the second request would be to allow us to get the conditional use permit or the occupancy permit on the guest house once it's completed prior to the main house.
John, could you clarify? It sounds like one of those is a planning commission item. The other is strictly within your purview in the Planning and Building Department. Is that true?
That would be true. That'd be a situation that would be worked out with our building official. The situation is not uncommon. We've done it before. I think it could be accommodated.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the planning commissioners have questions of the applicant, Mr. McQueen?
I do. Tony, this is Howard Layton. Just kind of looking at the site plan, just to verify that that right-of-way actually exists on your property and is that correct?
Oh, what?
The access road, the right-of-way that accesses the driveway for the other adjoining properties?
Our property goes to the middle of that private lane.
Okay, so you're to the middle of that.
Yeah.
Okay. What approximately, what's the size of the home itself? Not the carriage house, but the home?
The home is about ten thousand square feet on three floors, basement, main level, and a second floor.
Okay, so on the above-ground space, you've got about six thousand feet. Okay, and your driveway, is it coming off of that, off that shared right-of-way?
Yeah, what we wanted to do is we wanted to minimize driveway. So the driveway is going to come in, it'd probably be about one and a half width, come into this shared area, and then you drive into the main house. You got three-car garage, and then on the carriage house, you have a two-car garage. So we have a shared driveway area with, you know, one drive going into that area.
Okay.
The garages face each other, so it's a dual-use area back there.
You mentioned you weren't planning on fencing, but have you given consideration to maybe fencing the back one-fourth of that right-of-way that would maybe perhaps give more visual barrier of the carriage house?
We could. If you, John, if you could scroll up a little bit. We're actually spending a lot of time and effort and money on making sure that the house, carriage house, is consistent with the primary residence. So rather than having, here's the carriage house. So rather than having a utility building that looks like a shed or a barn, we wanted it to actually look like a house. So, yeah. So that would be facing the private lane. Then the back elevation is actually facing the backyard. And then this is the two-car garage. This face is facing the main house. And then the north-facing is just facing an empty lot. But you can see, you know, we've taken the great care to make it look not like a garage or a barn or an ancillary building. We wanted it to be, you know, something that was nice and fit into the neighborhood. And I think if you go under the next one, well, you go up a little bit, maybe go a few more. I think I put in, this is the main house. So you can see that it's consistent with the design of the main house on the property. And there's the three-back garages on the main house.
I think those are some of the most of my questions, just to give a little more perspective just in understanding how that kind of fits with the adjoining properties. So anyways, thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Howard. Are there any other questions for Mr. McQueen? Any of the other commissioners? If not, we'll open the public hearing. But before opening the public hearing, I'd like to remind everyone that any comments already submitted by email will be part of the public record from this meeting. And let me quickly explain the public hearing process on Zoom. What you'll need to do if you're wanting to speak on this issue is raise your virtual hand, and you'll be acknowledged by Stephanie Carlson, our city recorder, and you'll be given an opportunity to speak. But here are a few guidelines of those wanting to participate with us tonight for the first time. You'll be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission for approximately three minutes' time. One of us will be monitoring that. Five minutes if you represent an HOA or another group or a larger body. If you're following someone who has already spoken, please, please tell us if you agree with their comments or... Or if, without repeating them, and then you're able to provide us with any new information. Sorry about that. If you have any questions, please address me. Your questions will be answered by our staff or council after all the public's chance to speak. Stephanie, do we have anybody that would like to speak?
I am not seeing anybody that has raised their hand. We have three people, so I'm not seeing that any of them want to speak.
Okay, I would assume not having anyone address us there and not having any previous questions of the applicant, but I'd still like to ask any commissioners, if they have, do you have any additional questions of either staff or the applicant before we close the public hearing? Not hearing any. I would like to close the public hearing for the conditional use permit at 2163 East Pheasant Way in the R-143 zone.
And thank you for your consideration.
Planning Commissioners, this is an administrative act tonight, meaning that our approval of the conditional use permit above the footprint size for this, well, not above the footprint size, but above for this zone, but above the footprint size for a lot within this zone, it still needs to comply with the approval standards within the Holiday City Code. And those are in your packet if you've had a chance to look at at those. If there are any concerns or questions or further discussion that you'd like to have, I think we should have that now before entertaining a motion either way. Is there any, are there any other thoughts? Anne?
Chris, as I read through all of the comments by the neighbors and I looked at this conditional use permit, I started thinking about something we've been talking about over the almost two years now where the Utah State Legislature has tasked all cities to think about housing and more housing in their communities, and something we have discussed as a commission in Holiday about multi-generational homes. Chris, I think we've talked about casitas for... Chris, I think we've talked about casitas for, you know, aging family members and how we can accommodate the changing dynamics of families. And again, like multi generational families. So I think that this, this particular conditional use permit aligns with our discussions and the task that we have in front of us to create opportunities for more housing in holiday.
Thanks, Anne. Any other comments or questions?
Can I request that John change the screen to reflect the staff findings and conditions, possible conditions of approval?
There we go. Does that help?
Yes. So it, this wouldn't even come to us if he would have had the full acre, correct?
Yeah, three hundredths of an acre more.
Yeah.
And it's something, and it's something that could be done by any of the neighbors. Whether they had an acre or more or less, they they would go, they could come through the same process.
Okay, and is there, will there be a, a tree and landscape designed based on our tree ordinance? That is automatically included. I don't see it here as a condition, but I'm assuming that that that's just a regular thing that he would be going through, just so the neighbors know that landscape and trees and all of that will be required. Am I correct?
Yes, we'll need to see a landscaping plan with us as well. Yep.
Okay.
And we're, we're actually working on that right now with our landscapers. Our intention is to fully landscape the property. So whatever, whatever requirements there are, we'd be happy to comply with.
All right. I I don't see any problems.
I think, I think ironically, Tony, some of the views from that guest much worse than the views of the guest house are for the neighbors. Some of, some of the properties that are adjacent to you, so.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, we're, we understand that. Yeah. So we're, we're trying to plan the views accordingly.
Well, well done. Any other comments or questions?
Vice Chair, if I may?
Please.
Item number two here, I need to clarify this. The accessory building ordinance is not only apply applicable to an individual building, but accumulation of buildings. So if this were to be considered for approval tonight, I think this would need to be clarified by stating that this is 2,000 square feet of accumulated accessory buildings. Then he would need to amend his conditional use permit if he needed to come in for, say, a poolhouse or a shed or something other.
Oh, that's, that's a really good point, John. Thanks for bringing that to all our attention.
How would that more correctly read, John?
I would just add in the total number of the accessory buildings right here.
Yeah, the, the accumulative total of accessory buildings may not exceed a footprint of 200 or 2,000 square feet.
Okay.
I'm not, I, I thought we were just focusing on guest house and that it was just focused on, I could have as many accessory buildings as lot coverage allowed. Is there other restrictions on that?
Your, your lot coverage for accessory buildings is maxes out at that.
Okay.
About 1,200 square feet.
Okay.
And that's usually one of the scenarios we run into, right, is you have a detached garage and then a, a property owner is requesting to have another poolhouse or something extra as an accessory use. And then now we're over the maximum square footage allotment.
Okay, so I, we're not planning on it, but if we have, if we have to have something that just kind of houses the pool equipment, I'd have to come back and do this again? Okay, just mean to make sure we.
Well, and is it fair, John, is it fair to say though, that considering that coming back for this again, it's not just getting a conditional use to exceed the 1,200 square feet to 200, which is why we're here tonight. It would be wanting to go more than the 2,000 that the rest of the zone, regardless of their acreage, is allowed to do.
That's right. Unless you wanted to be really avant garde and and build in an extra 150 square feet.
Part of the garage.
Yeah. We, we don't have any plans on it yet, but I, I just wasn't familiar with that restriction. So this, this will cover us for what we want to do right now.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns for either staff or the applicant? If, if not, and there and we haven't heard any other voices out there and have closed the hearing. Do, do we have a motion? Is anyone ready to give a motion for, for this applicant? In this project?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you.
Considered. So if everybody's ready, I'll go ahead and do that. So behalf of the planning commission, I motion that we approve the conditional use application subject to the six suggested conditions. And I can read those out as some are modified. Number one, the use of the structure is residential and shall follow Holiday's land use regulations. Specifically, it may not support commercial business, long term or short term rental, commercial storage or leasing activities. Number two, the total cumulative accessory building may not exceed a footprint of 2,000 square feet or an overall height of 35 vertical feet. Number three, architectural treatments are required as the permit permitted submitted drawings. Number four, the conditional use shall run with the land and not the applicant. Number five, the conditional use is subject to inspection upon complaint of non compliance with the permit. And the applicant shall apply for and obtain an approved building permit for both structures. Howard? That is, yes.
Can I make one suggested revision to that motion? And that is that as to suggest is condition number two that read, that read the total cumulative of the accessory building. I think you said building singular. That should be plural. Buildings.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to make one more suggestion. Howard, if you want to just include the address of the property in your motion in question?
Yes, thank you. Probably should have said that from the beginning. So this motion would apply to the conditional use application by Anthony Quinn at an address of 2163 East Pheasant Way, Holiday, Utah, 84117.
McQuinn.
McQuinn, yeah, I didn't want to interrupt.
That's perfect. I'll second that motion of Howard's.
Sorry, Tony, I, I missed.
It's a common mistake.
Mary Ann, thank you for the second.
Thank you.
Like to call for a vote on that. One by one, Anne?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
And vice chair, oh, Mary Ann, did I miss you?
Yes, I.
Thanks. So sorry about that. And vice chair votes aye. So we I thank you, everyone, for your efforts on this. We, we have a vote of six in the affirmative versus zero in the negative.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I am now thrilled to turn the meeting back over.
Good job, Chris. Brilliant, Chris. It was brilliant, really.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris. I'm going on vacation, man. I'm out of here, baby.
Don't do me like that.
Okay, sorry, Tony, I couldn't be in on that, but you know why and I know why. So, okay. Great. I, I love that we can pass these conditional use permits that meet city requirements. So thank you, everybody, for thoughtfully thinking about that. Number two on our agenda tonight is an action item for the approval of the meeting minutes from 1110 and 1117. So let's start with the 1110 minutes. John's got them up on the screen. Does anybody have any changes? On page one.
Um, I think I do. Oh, not, not page one. I lied.
Okay, let's go to page two.
Page two, paragraph one, I think it's line five. Recommended should read recommend, kill the ED.
Oh, correct. Yeah, good catch, Alyssa.
Minutia.
Okay, anyone else on page two?
Line 27 of that same page, insert the word being, so it says being so prepared.
For being so prepared.
Yeah, for blunt, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Another good, good. Anybody else? Okay, so let's go on to page number three.
This is a excuse me, Marty, on line 12.
On, John, do you want to move it to page three, please? Thank you. Okay, line 12.
At the end of that parenthetical number three, the land use allows for the property owner to use the property as they. I think that should be singular it.
As as they choose, where are you saying the it?
As it rather than they, singular.
But aren't you talking about the property owner? Yeah, I think it is they.
The land use allows for the property owner to use the property as it chooses. As the property owner, not the property owner singular rather than plural to match it.
To use the property as it chooses, then it chooses as long, okay.
And then on paragraph eight, on line 18, Mr. Ensign reported that they had problems with the easements. And this, the, the rest of that, I had to read like three times before I understood it. I think we will, after easements, we want to insert a comma. But that and delete and.
But that their buildings now, now no longer approach. Because they changed their plans.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, anybody else on page three? Okay, how about page four? Okay, nothing on page four? Well, go back to that question mark on the not. Do it.
I left that in there. That was.
Result be resolved by not restricting or encumbering the easement. I think that's correct to add the not. Okay, yeah, so just take the question mark out. Yeah. Yeah. Good. Okay, anything else on page four? There's another question mark on line 22. Who decides what can be placed in an express easement? Should it be a question mark? He's just saying at the end of the sentence.
Yeah, no question mark.
That, no question mark there. Okay, nothing else on page four? Okay, let's go to page five. Anything on page five? Okay, page six. Okay, page seven. Okay, page eight. Okay, page nine. Okay, page 10. Page 11. Okay. I think we're good with corrections. Can I have a motion?
So Marty, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Okay, do I have a second?
Oh, I would like to second that.
Okay, let's vote on that, Chris. You might want to stick the date in there for the minutes because these are two different motions.
Oh, yeah. Let me revise that motion to approve the minutes for the November 10th Planning Commission meeting as corrected.
In 2020. Okay, let's vote. Chris?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So that's seven in favor, zero opposed. Let's move on to the 1117 minutes. Okay, page one.
On line 43, it reads, or if, insert it between if and is.
Or if it is, okay. Okay, anything else on page one? Page two? Page three? Page four? Page five? Page six? Page seven? Yeah, and Terry's getting good at this. It's awesome. And page eight. Okay, can I have a motion on the 1117 2020 minutes?
This is Anne. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 17th, 2020 as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
This is Alyssa. I second that.
Okay, let's have a vote. Chris?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So that's seven in favor, zero opposed. Okay, wow, we're cruising right through this now. Let's see, now we move on to number three. This is our work session, which will be an overview of the 2021 ordinance amendments. John's had a pretty busy couple of days, so are you ready for this, John, or should we postpone?
I, I'm just going to let you know that at our next meeting, we will be having a continued to public hearing. You continue the public hearing on your waterway protection ordinance. You started that months ago. I'm going to send out the draft that Jared and I, our city engineer Jared Bunch, and I have been working on refining over the past holiday. Because that's, that's one, one section of ordinance that I think is extremely critical. And I think because you've considered it and reviewed it. Most of you, I, I apologize for Howard and Marty. This is a section of ordinance that deals with construction in proximity to our waterways. Previously, whenever there was a house, garage, shed, poolhouse, any type of structure that's built within certain distances of our waterways, canals, Big Conwood Creek, Spring Creek, planning commission had to review and consider those approval standards. Sometimes they got extremely difficult to consider. And following suit of other municipalities in the county that have similar waterways or, or, you know, the same, either the same water bodies or similar waterways. I think it behooves the city of Holiday to follow suit and create expected standards that our residents can clearly understand and go into a clearly understand and go into a construction project well knowing full, full well what the, what their limitations are, rather than proposing something that there would be their plan A and then requesting the planning commission for a type of exception, which is always fraught with contention. So that being said, you know, we've assembled all of the past uh planning commission reviews of denial and approvals of various types of applications and established a set of cri- standard criteria. Um, you know, within certain distances of these waterways, um, only certain elements are gonna be allowed to be approved. If those standards can't be met, then it's, would be a variance situation. I think that's what the planning commission specifically wanted it to occur. If a property owner could not meet these standards, it wasn't an exceptions situation with the planning commission being the reviewing body, but rather a variance situation requesting a hardship problem with, with the land that they couldn't meet those standards. So um, it is a lengthy piece of uh ordinance or legislation, if you will. So it will take some time to get through, but I think um, it will be extremely clear when you receive this uh draft as to what the intent is, what the standards are, and what's expected by um planning commission and then most likely city council. So that will be the one that will be coming up next meeting. And then following suit will be uh several um pieces of code that will be updating our ordinance for compliance with state legislative review from the twenty-nineteen legislative session and actually a couple from twenty-eighteen. But, you know, we've had quite a bit of change in our department over the last two months with the holiday as well thrown into the mix. We have our business license official who's getting married. She's out for the, for two weeks. We have a new director, um, and we now have brought in uh a new building official. Greg Kennard, who has always worked for Forsgren for quite some time, has now been hired on um in our staff to be the very first city of Holiday building official. Uh, so that's been kind of a, a tremendous feat to get him on board. And, and um up to speed with the software and equipment that he needs to perform now his duties as Holiday's inspector and building official.
Awesome, because he knows, he's been before us several times. He knows the stuff, so that'll be great.
He does. He's gained trust uh with the community, with property owners as well as uh the, the building uh community, general contractors know him. We're very lucky that we were able to, to keep him on.
Wow, that's great.
That's quite a month.
Yeah.
Big month. I think, I think was it, it can, it could be called the win for our department regardless of what twenty-twenty-two has.
John, can I just say personally how grateful I am that you're still here? You, you are, you are the glue that holds this all together.
As our new planning manager.
Yeah.
Yay. Yay. And thank you, John, for all your work on this waterway ordinance. I mean, that is just huge. And like you say, that's gonna take a lot of pressure off us as a commission and I know involved a lot of time and effort between you and Jared and uh, we appreciate it. So we'll, we'll happily look at your lengthy document.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate you guys. You guys are the best.
Anything else, John?
No, that's all.
Okay. Did we ever finish updating the Holiday Village? Um, I know we went through turning the shells to shoulds and things like that. Did we finish that or is that coming down the pipe?
That's coming down the pipe.
Okay.
You know, and if I, if we, if you have the fortitude for it, we can put them together.
No, no, come on. We gotta ease into the year, John. We, we don't want to overwork you. Let's tackle these one at a time.
I was just telling Jan or Chair Bradshaw that uh you also have three additional rezone applications coming your way in the next month and a half.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I, 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 I gotta make sure that your agendas are spaced out a little bit so you can have the, the strength.
I just want to do the Holiday Village one before we see something else come to us in the Holiday Village.
Noted.
But John, can you give us an idea of where those are or what they are? Just as a little bit of a preview, just for thought?
On the Holiday Village codes?
No, on the, on the rezones, you mentioned.
Oh, yeah.
Coming down the pipe and uh just curious to maybe where those might be.
Um, one of them is a reapplication from the Toma Mark. They requested a zone, which is our, our one-ten, I believe. And they're now coming back to request our one-fifteen, which would uh provide a way to split that lot into two building lots rather than three building lots.
Yeah.
Um, the second is a fairly um obscure request from the area down on sixty-two-hundred south around Houston Park. That zone is vastly our one-twenty-one. The request there is an R-one-eight zoning uh for a small piece of ground to split.
That's my neighborhood.
Yeah, you'll, you'll, that most likely will be on the, this next meeting on the nineteenth, but uh we're waiting for her to hold her neighborhood meeting, which may push it into February. And the third would be a request, which is up here on the intersection of Forty-Fifth and Twenty-three Hundred East. And there's a vacant little postage stamp of a lot that's owned by Solid Public Utilities.
Yes.
And our request is to re- to look at that intersection, the northeast corner of that intersection um for a possible redevelopment project.
Great. John, can I ask you one more question? Up in my office, we happen to have Mayor Colomore come through and he, of course, is the mayor for Conwood Heights, uh, mentioned something about the gravel pit up on Wasatch Boulevard. Um, at the intersection, there were Mill Rock is. Uh, any insights of things that maybe we ought to know or kind of be aware of?
Yes, so a few things, if you haven't been watching or reading the Holiday Journal, um, Conwood Heights has prepared a master plan for that entire gravel pit. Very similar, um, not quite unlike the SDMP smaller master plan for the Conwood Mall. Mixed use, um, fairly much, much higher heights than what we were considering uh in that gravel pit area. Um, not so much up on the hillside, but down in the lower flattened area. Uh, the biggest um concern that involves Holiday is that majority of their traffic is gonna be proposed to go out onto Wasatch Boulevard and then to the light that adjoins uh would be sixty-two-hundred south and at Wasatch Boulevard. Uh, the situation there is that um UDOT, uh, that street that's fronting the gravel pit all the way to Big Conwood Road Canyon Road is a state road. And UDOT only approves so many a- access points along that street. And from what I understand, they've maxed them out. Uh, this project will max out all those driveway points. So one of the main exit or entrance points will be off Wasatch Boulevard. Um, and so our city council is in negotiation with um Conwood Heights on that matter. But as far as the, all, all of the other entrance points up along Canyon Cove, uh, uh, in that subdivision up on the hillside, there has, there previously was some proposals to connect into that subdivision, but I believe they've all gone away now. So as far as crossing into the, the city boundaries, that would be the main point um that we're looking at right now. But massive mixed-use rezone, um, hundreds of residential units along with mixed use. Uh, it's quite a, quite a large project.
Well, and even right now, uh, with the ski season, it's common that that traffic backs up to the freeway and even on to the freeway to get on to sixty-two uh, which eventually funnels up to Wasatch. So I think as a city, we have a challenge to kind of figure out how to whatever we can do to help manage or to understand what we can do to mitigate. Uh, that'll be a key thing to watch, watch for.
True, yeah.
Was that um, was that area designated on the long-term map of Wasatch Front people for mass transit?
It was.
Mary Ann, wasn't that area?
Yeah, I'm thinking that was a hub that was, you know, supposed to also serve Holiday. Is, am I correct?
That's right.
Maybe they could do something with that. Okay.
And also that was going to be there. We're gonna bring the train, the um the UTA train to that location coming up seventy-two-hundred south. That was part, that was a major part of that presentation. Do you guys remember that?
I think that was, was, was that part of one of the options for the Big Conwood Canyon transportation plan?
Yes.
And I think there's so much.
Yeah.
I don't remember the seventy-second part, but I do remember them wanting to connect seventy-second to the U with something along Wasatch. Do you guys remember that?
I don't.
Some, something that would get those kids over to the U going along there, but all right. We'll see. Okay.
One more thing, Jonathan. I've been driving by the Conwood Mall every day, or excuse me, Holiday Hills. And there's a lot of, of big earth moving equipment and a lot of um uh big, I don't know what you would call them, um sewage.
I, exactly what they are, yeah.
Are they, are they still proposing to do the, the condo building and the hotel?
Uh, I haven't heard much word on the hotel. I'm pretty sure it's still on the, in, in, in consideration for them. They're really focused on this sewer line connection.
Okay.
Going underneath Hi- Highland Drive and connecting through the backside of Training Table.
Okay.
That's where they need to make their main connection, but as far as I know, although, all that equipment's lined up, it looks really pretty right now, but they were going gung ho right before the holidays. I'm sure it'll pick up again.
Yeah, yeah. You mean the Tandoori Grill or whatever?
I'm sorry.
Indian place.
It's a fantastic uh little lunch buffet if we ever get to that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any, anything else for John? Well, I just want to tell Lanis again, thanks for joining us tonight and joining our team of um, at Holiday City. We're, we're excited to have you and to learn from you. And again, John, we're so happy that you're our new planning manager and will continue on with us. Um, thanks, Jamie, for being with us tonight and not sure we're gonna see Paul anymore, but um just know he'll be at the city of Holiday, um, transitioning Lanis for the next six months, if I'm correct. And then he will retire. Um, thanks again, everybody, and a special thanks to Chris.
Good job, Chris.
Start, I'm gonna start planning vacations, man. I mean.
Rookie.
I, I think that, um, I.
Oh, my hell.
Yeah, so.
Hey, and I do know Alyssa's name is Alyssa, not Aly. I wish, that's what happens when you read something.
Yeah. And thanks, Stephanie, for running our meeting for us. Always, Stephanie, you're awesome. And remember, everybody, get an appointment with Stephanie and get your conflict of interest form signed so she can have those on file.
Right.
Like a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the Holiday Planning Commission meeting for January fifth at seven oh three.
Yeah, seven oh three. Um, do I have a second?
Marty, beg seconds to motion.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks again, guys. Why? Thank you, Jeff.